This conference will now be recorded.
And there's Rachel. Okay.
And Rachel's here. Yay. All right, so we'll call the meeting into order at 7:02. Thank you all for taking the time this evening to join us. I know it's a crazy time for everybody. We're all going through crazy times. But, you know, it is what it is. So thank you very much for being here. Did anybody have anything to add to the agenda that you received in your email? Were there any additions to the agenda? Okay, not hearing any, then we're gonna move forward then. Can I get a... Well, first, regarding the October 19th agenda, where did anyone see anything that was omitted? And I do thank Joe for getting to watch the movie again of last month's meeting and putting together the minutes. Does anybody have any additions or deletions or alterations of our minutes from October 19, 2020? Okay, not hearing any. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as they are printed?
It was much better the second time.
Please, somebody. So you want to accept the motion? The minute... Thank you, Katie. Somebody wanted to say that.
Amanda, I'll second.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, yay. All right, so the minutes from October 2020 have been accepted and become archived in wherever they get archived. Okay, so to the treasures report. So Melanie, you...
Yes, okay, so starting with the financial position statements, this is October's financials. You will notice that now the accounts on the first one should all be correct. We do not... The Centennial Fund is gone. The Preferred Savings is gone. The Preferred Savings Plus has now been opened. And we are down to two 18-month CDs. So that is all correct, and that is what we discussed, and that should all be done for now. Nothing else of real note on the financial positions. Did anybody have any questions or comments on that first financials? Okay, the second one is our statement of activity, just kind of what we have done from now, from January to now, and comparing it with January to now, to October of last year. The biggest thing is, is Gilderlin's check is in there now. So you'll see that first line has that $61,000 added, which definitely changes our revenue. Going through, there wasn't too much else. One thing that I did see, and it's kind of, I guess, a silver lining or a happy thing to note. If you look on the very last page, it has our net operating revenue this year compared to last year. And even though they're both negative, partly because we haven't gotten the check from Altamont yet, we get that at the very end of the year, which kind of balances everything out. We still are $4,000 ahead of where we were last year at this point. So obviously, our revenue, our fundraising was down a little bit the second half of the year, but also our expenses were down quite a bit. So that's a... We're on good track with that. Any questions or comments on that part of the statement of activity?
That's crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy. It is crazy. And the third one is the budget versus actual. And not too many new notes on here from Jason, actually no notes on this one. But if you do notice, like halfway down the page, there's our gift and donation revenue. And we had budgeted $13,000, and we have already reached $10,000 of that for our gifts and donations. So our gifts and donations are not... And actually, compared to last year at this time, I think we're actually up. So our giving, and that's not fundraising, that's just gifts, donations, that type of thing, is actually pretty on track as well. So that's another positive note, I thought. And Joe did mention, I think you, to everybody, you said about the Stuart's $2,000 donation that's coming in. That doesn't count that yet either. That'll be another... It'll be very close. Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts about the financials? Not hearing or seeing anything. So we have a motion to accept the October 2020 financials.
Make the motion.
And second? Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, back to you, Dan.
Great, thanks Melanie, very much. All right, let's see. To the director's report, Mr. Burke.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I've got three or four small things that I want to talk about, and then one big thing that I want to talk about. So just going through the report, circulation is fine. It's not good. It's not terrible compared to other libraries. For the past three months, we've been running between 2/3 and 3/4 of our, of last year's circulation. And I'm fine with that. It's better than a lot of libraries are doing. As I've said before, most are running about half. So we're doing okay in that sense. I sent around the minimum standards from the, from New York State. I don't think there are any major changes that we're going to have to make to to our bylaws or policies, except that we're going to have to do what we're starting to do tonight with a a schedule of policy review. So we're routinely going to have to... One of the, you know, big things is that they want you to routinely review policies, bylaws, charter, et cetera. And so we are going to start doing that tonight. There are a few other smaller things that we'll need to do to be in line with the new minimum standards, but a lot of that is going to be in the long-range plan, which is going to be crafted throughout the year next year. So not too much to worry about. On the Stuart's donation, I will once again reiterate that anybody who wants to attend the ribbon cutting, we will be happy to have you. I will send your name ahead to the Stuart's folks, just so that they know to expect you. And obviously, we're very, very grateful to Stuart's for acknowledging our role in the community with their donation. For the Library Lights, for anybody who hasn't attended in the past, this year it's taking place on December 11th, Friday, December 11th at 6:00 PM. It's a very nice little ceremony. It's short, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes. But it's, so it's very nice. It's taking place in conjunction this year with the Village Festival of Lights, which is taking the place of the Victorian holiday celebration. I do need, as I do every year, three or four people to help me read off the names of our honorees. So anybody who would be willing to help out with that, I would be very grateful for the help.
Oh, I'll do that.
Thank you, Dan.
Joe, I can do that.
Thank you, Dan. All right, anybody else who wants to help, just let me know. Okay.
Hey, Joe, before you move on from that, one question. Is there any possibility, this was a comment that I received from someone in the community, is there any possibility that the Library Lights form could be done digitally as opposed to being done paper and pencil?
There is a digital version, there's a digital version on the website. But it's still the sort of thing where you have to... Let me, let me, let me make up a Google form tomorrow, and I'll put a link to that through through the website.
Okay.
And I'll also...
It's not a big deal, don't worry. It was just one person, but I just wanted to call attention, and I was asked about that.
Yeah, no, thank you. It should be easy enough, I would think. There's one other small thing before the big thing. I had a, I had an email yesterday, or over the weekend, rather, from Reverend Van Maastricht, Matthew Van Maastricht from Altamont Reform Church. He is thinking about putting together a series of programs, a kind of a speakers series, that would be hosted when it can be hosted live sometime from now at the church. And hosting it, you know, via Zoom or whatever, in the meantime. He is looking to recruit speakers of some, I don't know, local renown. He's really just in the planning stages of putting this, this series of programs together. And he's looking for community partners, and he reached out to us to see if this would be something that we would be interested in partnering with them on. So I bring it up for a couple of reasons. We've never really partnered with a religious organization, as far as I'm aware, on programming. We do things like, you know, bringing storytimes to some of the, some of the nursery schools that are housed in religious organizations. But we have never really partnered with a church before. So I'm not 100% sure what the rules of the road are on that, whether we can use, you know, taxpayer money to support a program that's being, you know, sponsored by a religious organization, or whether that's just not a concern at all. I'm not really sure. I do think that there is a lot to be said in terms of a strong correspondence in mission between, between us and Altamont Reform. I like Matthew very much personally, consider him a friend. I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential good that could come out of a partnership like that. One of the reasons that I'm hesitant to jump right in is that, you know, what happens if at some point down the road, we get a request for partnership with a religious organization with which we don't have such a great, you know, that, that there's, there's more conflict with. And so I'm not 100% sure where, where I am on this. I've thought about it a little bit. Does anybody have any thoughts?
I've got two. One's a question, and one's, one's just a historical perspective. What's, what is the theme of the series? What is that going to be about?
He doesn't have one yet. We've sort of talked a little bit about subjects like social equity, ethics, creating a, you know, an ethical framework in increasingly in a world where it's increasingly difficult to know how to do that. So he doesn't have, he's not approaching this from having a, having a strong thematic, you know, cohesion to the speakers that he wants to bring in yet. This is really the, the planning stages. They would not be religious themes, he has assured me. There's not a, there's not a strong religious message.
Okay. The second thing I'll just say from, from a historical perspective is when we, and I'm just mentioning this because it came to my head as soon as you started talking about this, is when the library first moved into the new train station, okay? We were going to have a big opening celebration, you know, with elected officials and such. And at the meeting, because I can remember, because I was summarily shot, shot down as a result of this comment, but at the meeting I said, well, perhaps we should invite all of the local clergy people to be part of this, since they are part of the community as well. And I was, the thought then, and I'm not saying it's the thought now, but the thought then was, that was something that we did not want to cross into as a public library in terms of that. So I'm just throwing that out because that was what happened when that was just going to invite them to be at the opening ribbon cutting kind of thing. You know, no one was going to be opening with a prayer or anything along that lines. But anyway, it's, I think it's something we do need to think about a little bit in terms of that. You know, what are, and maybe we ought to talk to other libraries to see where they are coming down on this, or maybe we just decide ourselves. I don't know.
Yeah, I've done a little bit...
But I just wanted to know that's, that happened.
Thank you. Yeah, I've, I've done a little bit of research on this. ALA has some guidelines on their youth programming page for, you know, for partnering with, with religious organizations, whether that's pushing out into religious facility or partnering, you know, for, to combine finances on a co-present, the co-presentation. So there are some ideas. But again, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure how I, how I feel about it. So I'd like to keep thinking about it, and if, you know, if you have any thoughts, please let me know. I'm not aware of other organizations. Well, so, okay, there are a couple of programs of which I'm aware that take people from, for various religious organizations. Voorheesville did one of these a few, a few years ago, where they had people from the local Christian, Muslim, Jewish communities all together for a sort of conversational, you know, talking across, across denominations sort of thing. And that was apparently very successful. I'm not sure if that's exactly the same sort of thing. We're not, so I don't know.
Question, Joe.
If, if Pastor Matthew, I'm assuming, I thought you said it was going to take place at the Altamont Reform Church? Is that what you said?
When, when there are, you know, when we're able to, to gather again. He was suggesting that the church is a possible...
Does he want to have the library as a partner? Did he say that?
Yes. For planning purposes, for financing purposes, for community outreach purposes, marketing purposes. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I asked, but I don't think he said in his response what other organization he's reached out to. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Paul and then Melanie had something.
Well, you might have just answered the question. I was just going to ask how, what our cooperation would look like. But you've kind of indicated that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was my question too, what our partnership entailed. So is he, financially, is it paid speakers? Is, is that what?
At this stage, that's what he's, that's what he's thinking about. I asked what, you know, what the honoraria usually are for the caliber of speakers that he's looking for, so that we could have some sense of what kind of the financial commitment would be. He didn't know at this stage. So, you know, the financing is, is at least to his mind, not, not the, not the most important aspect of it. It's, it's planning outreach, marketing.
Gotcha.
So, but you know, maybe that, maybe that's what makes the difference. I'm not sure. So we'll, I'll keep thinking about it. We'll keep talking about it amongst ourselves, and you know, maybe there are other partners in this, this organization. And if it, you know, if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out for any number of reasons. So, okay, again, if you have any other thoughts about that, please let me know. So now we come to the, the big thing that I wanted to mention, and it is sort of, I feel like, well, last Wednesday, or last Friday, rather, was, was, was Friday the 13th. And it brought very much to mind the last Friday, the 13th, that we went through, which was March, March 13th, 2020, when we were all gathered together and meeting in an emergency basis to talk about pulling back, closing down, rising cases, et cetera, et cetera. And so I would just like to talk and think for a few minutes about the thresholds that we have established for drawing back from browsing, in-person browsing, and the, and you know, what, what library service is going to look like going forward as cases continue to rise. So I'm going to share my screen. This is the library reopening plan. We most recently revisited it in September. We're currently in step two of reopening, browsing by appointment. I've highlighted here the, the guidelines that we approved in September for what, at what point we pull back from from browsing by appointment. And we said that if the Altamont Elementary School suspends in-person classes, or if Albany County rate of positive COVID tests goes above 5%, we will revert to a curbside service only model until conditions stabilize at a safe level. Right now, as of this morning, the rate of positive testing in Albany County, the seven-day average is 2.5, 2.5%. It doesn't specifically say seven-day average, but I think that's an important point. And I think that probably we should update those, those those, those guidelines to specify that it's the seven-day average, because on a given day, you can have a big college test, you know, big college population, all testing on the same day, and you'll get these, you know, daily spikes. A couple of days ago, there was one over 5%. The next day after that, it was under 1%. So it fluctuates. The seven-day average smooths things out and gives a bit of a more complete picture. As I think about it, as I talk about it with my other directors, 5% increasingly feels too high to me, and that we should lower that threshold somewhat, or use a different guideline altogether. One that was suggested to me and other directors earlier today comes from the Harvard Global Health Initiative. And they have a website called COVID Act Now, which I'm going to pull up. I'm going to try to. All right, this is COVID Act Now, again, which is a project of the Harvard Global Health Initiative. And the, the threshold that Judith Wines was suggesting that she uses for, for her library was the rate of daily new cases. Harvard Global Health Initiative says that a rate of over 25 cases, 25 new cases per 100,000 people in a county is, is, is bad news. So right now, you'll see we are at 22.9. Is this Albany County? No, it's not. It's going to pull up Albany County. Fortunately, we're towards the bottom of the list of, of New York counties in terms of the, the rate of new, new cases. So 22.4, a 1.31 infection rate, which is also not great. That means that for every person who is, who has COVID, they are infecting 1.31 people. Any number over 1% is a bad number. You want that to be lower than 1%. In other words, fewer people are passing it on, and it's, you know, and they're, they're, they're getting healthy without infecting new people. So this is, this is Albany County. You can see, just on October 31st, we were at this medium level. And right now, in just the first couple of weeks of, of November, we have spiked pretty dramatically, and we are very nearing the critical level. So that would be one way of approaching the guidelines. One, we get to 25%, we pull back. Or we could continue to use the rate of positive tests. For that, I look to the, the state dashboard. COVID dashboard. And I don't know how frequently anybody checks this, but I, I'm pretty, I watch it pretty closely. Albany is the top county right here. So it is the, the positive seven-day average is 2.5%, like I said. Not the worst, not the best, but it is rising, and it's rising fast. And I hate to think of it being twice as bad as it is now. Also, because it's a seven-day average, it makes it a bit of a lagging indicator. So waiting until it's, you know, if you'll, you'll see a couple of days of it being over 5% before the average is over 5%. Which, you know, if, if the idea is to to draw back before, you know, before we get to a critical stage, in order to prevent us from getting to a critical stage, then using a lagging indicator like a seven-day rolling average may not be the best thing. So another suggestion that I have heard was 3%. I can't remember. It might have been Voorheesville. It might have been, might have been somebody else was using 3% as the seven-day, seven-day average. I could go either way on that, but I do think that it should be adjusted down. So what do you guys think?
Just two questions. So you're talking about, or a couple of questions, for the browsing to taking it back down to curbside only?
That's right.
And, and what is just the frequency of your appointments for browsing lately?
It's about three a day. We had planned on expanding that this week to a fuller part of the day, so that instead of starting at 2:00 PM, it would start at 11:00 AM. The idea was that after a couple of weeks of working out the kinks on the, every day we have two shifts, a 10 to 2, and a 2 to 4, 2 to 6. So by having it only 2 to 6, we were isolating only the employees who work 2 to 6. And if, whatever happened, if, you know, if there became, if we became really, really popular, and it became a health emergency, we were seeing lots of appointments. At least those people, there wouldn't be the kind of cross-pollination to the earlier shift. There would be less exposure, was my thinking. But now that we've seen that we're getting only two or three or four appointments, walk-in appointments per day, and we've figured out how to do it safely, healthfully, and with minimum exposure to, to the staff, we had thought we would expand that. Obviously, now is probably not the time to be expanding anything.
I'm assuming people who do come to the library are really local. I mean, like, I don't know how widespread, but do you have any idea what, have you heard anything from people coming down with it locally?
You know, I mean, we've, we've all, I think, probably heard stories about, about positive cases. We hear about it more when they are school-aged people, because that notification, those notifications go out to every member of the community. You hear less about, you hear less about, about other, other people. But there's, there, you know, there have been cases, there have been cases in every school, in the school district. There have been a few cases at, at the elementary school, at Altamont Elementary School, cases at, at the middle school, cases at the high school. That's, that's what I'm hearing about.
It seems likely that within a few weeks, we're going to be up to that point, and who knows how much higher it will go. My first reaction is to remain pretty conservative about this, because none of us know how bad this is going to get, and we certainly don't want it to get away from us. And it doesn't seem like it would be that great a trial, or, you know, difficulty for the public. And it doesn't seem like it would be that great a trial or, you know, difficulty for the public. So I'm comfortable with that 3% daily infection rate.
Yes, I like the 3%. That's what I was gonna at least something lower.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, we're not talking about closing the library. We're just going back to curbside pickup only. So the library services will still be available for people. It'll just be in a different modality. And so, you know, I think, I think that makes perfect sense, what Rachel and Paul are saying. And I'd be willing to go along with that as well. I think it makes sense to lower it, so we don't get, we don't potentially expose our staff to, you know, because we're waiting for it to hit 5%, and it's 4.5% or whatever. That doesn't make sense to me, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd have to say I'd agree as well, only just, you know, the staff's sense of security being there. We all, everybody, I believe, has expected this second wave to come. And with the understanding that we took enough precautions ahead of time, because we have everybody's safety in mind, I think the 3% is good. Because again, we knew this was gonna happen, so I think people might even be expecting services, you know, for like, in person to close back down again. So I think the public would be completely understanding.
No, no.
And there wasn't a huge clamor. You know, there aren't people, there aren't waiting lists for the browsing.
Right.
No, okay. I think it also sends a signal. I think it sends a signal to the community that that we're taking this seriously, that you should take this seriously, and guys, everybody, you should take this seriously. So I guess I would ask for a motion then to amend our reopening guidelines to reflect that we will draw back from from browsing by appointment when the Albany County seven day average, the daily infection or the daily positive test rate goes over 3%. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I made that motion.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Dick. All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is, thank you. Okay, so that's what it's gonna be. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Can you just say the policy name again?
The policy is the it is properly the Altamont Free Library reopening guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask you one more quick question before we move on now?
Yep.
And the question is this, if it goes above 3%, we go back to curbside pickup only. But I mean, if the next seven day average drops below 3%, are we gonna be flip-flopping back and forth? Or are we gonna wait a little bit before we go back to the opening it up to browse? Because I don't, like Amanda said, nobody knows how this is gonna play out. There are ups and downs in this thing. Is it gonna say we're gonna go back to curbside browse or curbside pickup for six weeks, something like that, just to cover ourselves?
Right, so the end of the sentence in the policy, I'm just gonna go back to it. I'm not gonna share my screen, but I'm just gonna read this again.
I have that front of me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. In fact, why don't I share my screen? All right, cool. All right, so it's, you know, if Altamont Elementary School suspends in-person classes, or if the Albany County rate of positive COVID tests goes above 3%, we're gonna change that. Rate of positive. We will revert to a curbside service only model until conditions stabilize at a safe level. So there is a hard and fast metric on the beginning. There's not a hard and fast metric on the end. So it's gonna be a board decision.
Okay, that's cool. That sounds good.
Okay. Okay, thank you all for that. That is all I've got for my very long director's report.
Okay, Joe, one more question. Do we also? Yeah, for that policy, the motion, did it also include updating it for the seven day average?
Yeah.
That was in there, right?
That's what it says.
That we just agreed to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Seven day, seven day average of 3%.
Just checking on the seven day average part, that was in there. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Anybody else have any questions for Joe on his report? All right, not hearing any. Thank you again, Joe, for your fine work as always. And let's see. I'm trying to find the agenda again. Hold on. Oh, there it is. Okay, we're going to the committee reports. And let's see. Yeah, this is a gift I have. All right, here we go. Personnel committee did not meet. Program committee did not meet. Okay, building committee, Paul, you got anything to share with us?
I do not. We did not meet, and unless it's Joe, that's something that I'm not aware of.
No, not really. I've got to do some work on the bathroom, both of the bathrooms, actually. The locks on both of the bathroom doors are not working.
Oh, okay. No one's using the bathrooms right now, though, correct?
Well, I mean, the staff, the staff are?
I mean, patrons aren't using the bathroom.
Patrons, patrons are not, patrons are not. No, but I've got, I've got, there's some building-related work to be done on the bathrooms. The locks on both of the doors are not working. One of them is just a hook and latch. The other one is a gilded age, you know, door locking mechanism, which I do have some experience with, and I'm pretty confident I'll be able to fix. It's just a matter of like, taking out the cartridge and fiddling with it. It's kind of fun. But we've also got, one of the toilets is running, and it just needs to replace the flapper on that. And I will be doing that sometime this week.
Okay, you can certainly delegate it anytime you want to, to me. It's up to you. I know you sound like you're on it, and you're more than equal to the task, so whatever, just know that I will do it if you feel like you got too much on your plate.
It shouldn't, it should be the work of an hour, I would imagine.
So when you work with the gilded age locks, Joe, do you wear like period garb? No.
And I put on my
Good, 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 good. Finance committee, anything else to report? Finance committee?
Just two quick things. We did work more. We went over the long-term holding plans, and we are still working on that. And we also brought up the point that, and I'm sure about the annual fund, if we do receive money from the annual fund for this year, it will be on this year's financials, unless we change something with that. That was the two main things we discussed.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Melanie. The policy committee, the policy committee is, has, has, has it's kind of evolved a little bit. Deb Katz has graciously volunteered to serve on the policy committee, and given her expertise, we are really happy about that. And Joe has also taken the bull by the horn, so to speak, and started moving us through as he's already described with regards to what Upper Hudson wants us to be doing. But we've got two policies, facilities, am I right about this, Joe, and records retention, that you have made some changes to?
That's correct, yeah. Which one do you wanna handle first?
Why don't we do the easy one first?
Okay. So that's records retention. Bringing it up. So the records retention policy is kind of a pro forma policy that we have to have, we have to have in our back pocket. The guidelines for how long we keep any form of record is basically dictated by the New York State Department of Education. And if you wanna, if you're, if you're running out of sleeping pills and you wanna do some fascinating reading about records retention schedules, there is a link on the file that you have up here for it's, it's hundreds and hundreds of pages. But the upshot of it, as far as it relates to us, is what's presented down below, how long we have to keep each of these types of record. Is there anything that anybody feels like they want to talk about about this? The answer really ought to be no.
It is no, Joe, but can I just note one thing about something you put up, do you slide that down a little bit? Or the other direction, yeah?
Yep.
Shouldn't it say the New York State Department of Education guidance?
Yes, thank you.
That's the only thing I saw that we might want to do. So we need so we need a motion to accept this, or we're just gonna say it's, we have to have a motion to adopt these, this change?
That's right. Yes, please.
We got a motion to adopt the changes to the records retention policy?
A motion, Amanda.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda motion, Katie seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, it's been adopted for, all right, on to
Facilities. All right, so the facilities policy is obviously not a policy that we're availing ourselves of very much at the moment. But it is, you know, potentially, there may be worth more we're talking about here. The drafts, the changes that I have put in here are pretty minor tweaks for the most part. And I guess the one new restriction that we've put in here, well, two, I guess. First is this overall health consideration, which is to say that, along with the rest of the facility, Altamont Free Library will restrict the use of library facilities, excuse me, in the event of a public health emergency, in adherence with the guidelines from, guidelines from New York State and the Albany County Department, Department of Health. Oh, no, New York State and Albany County Departments of Health, so two departments of health there. We have also, I've also added a new restriction number nine that gets to if a group wanted to use the meeting room for a meeting, and they wanted to show a movie or use a sound recording, they would be entirely responsible for securing the presentation rights for movies, music, or any other copyrighted materials presented. The library doesn't take any it does not take any responsibility for the presentation of copyrighted material. This is something that, you know, you hear horror stories about libraries running into trouble with, where unbeknownst to the library, a organization is using the library facility. They show a movie, they didn't have the rights, they advertised it, the advertisement ended up on some lawyer's desk, and all of a sudden, you know, Paramount, Universal, Disney, whoever is sending the library a letter saying that you owe us whatever, $2,000 or something. So in order to put an end run around that, I just sort of wordsmithed this restriction number nine. And no copyright, we have this stipulation that no copyright works may be presented unless the appropriate permissions are secured. So we won't just say, you know, it's on you. You know, this is gonna be your responsibility, not ours. We're just gonna say, just don't do it. Don't show any copyrighted materials unless you have explicit permission to do that.
Hey, Joe? Would it be wise to add at the end of that sentence where it says, unless the appropriate permissions are secured and presented to the library in advance?
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Do they have to sign?
That way, we actually have, you know, we just have a paper trail in terms of what's involved.
Yep, I like that. There is a, you know, there is the form that they have to fill out in order to use the facility. So maybe we could yeah, I'm gonna add that same restriction number nine down here to the restrictions for outside organizations. If I haven't done that already. Yeah, I haven't done that yet. Any other questions, comments, concerns about the facilities use policy?
Okay, not hearing any. We got a motion to accept the amended revised facilities use policy?
A motion, Melanie.
Anybody want to make a motion to accept it? Okay, Melanie, Katie, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or in opposition to it?
Okay, well, great. Thank you guys all.
I guess we've got a kind of slow connection going on here with some the audio.
So as I said before, this is going to be part of a, this is going to be a routine part of our meetings from here on out. Every month, we will deal with a policy or a series of policies.
Thank you, Joe, very much.
Am I muted? Guys, can you hear me? Okay, so this is, this is gonna be an ongoing part of our meetings going forward where in order to for lots of different reasons.
Joe, I have no idea what you're saying.
Is any, I think it might be you, Dan. Okay. Then it might be your connection. So next, so all, this is all to say that next month, we're going to be looking at the selection of library materials policy, which is another policy that has not been revisited in quite some time, and might be worth some discussion. So you've got that to look forward to. Merry Christmas.
Okay, I don't know if it's hear what I'm saying. And if not, I'll just turn it all over to Joe, because obviously something's going, no, you can't hear me?
We can hear you intermittently, Dan. Can you, it's sort of fading in and out, and sometimes it's, it's a little deaf punked up. It's a little but but you look good. Amanda, you wanna, you wanna take the reins?
My mic is off.
Okay. All right.
Yes, I can take over. I just gotta pull up the minutes on my phone, because I have you guys on my iPad. So give me a second.
No problem. While Amanda's doing that, I will say that there's not much, the next couple of items on the agenda have to do with fundraising ideas and the gala or the event that we would theoretically be holding. or the event that we would theoretically be holding at the, the Altamont Fairgrounds, which we discussed at Blanks last meeting. I don't have any updates on either of those points. I'm not sure if anybody else does.
Okay, so if there's, yeah, if there's nothing further, the annual appeal update is next on the list, an old business?
Yeah, so attached in the, the board packet, you will have received the most recent draft of the annual appeal letter, that is hopefully very nearly the last, the final draft. I have sought input not only from you all, and your input was, was all excellent, so thank you all for taking the time to, to write in about that. The, but I, but also from my wife who does these things routinely, and from Christine Carpenter, who does these things routinely, and who's always been a very good editor, and so the, the, the nearly final draft is, is in your is in your board packets. I would just say, rather than editing the letter during the meeting, take a look at that, if you have any final thoughts, any, anything else to add, suggest, change, get those to me, and my hope is to get those printed out. All of the labels, the address labels are already printed, the envelopes are all printed, they're all addressed, they're all stamped. So once we've got a final okay from you guys on the, the text of the letter, we can print that up and get that out the door. Or we can print it up and start folding and stuffing and licking envelopes, and then get it out the door.
Okay. Next up is the report of nominating committee for 2021 board position. Let's see.
Dan, can you hear us? Alright.
I can hear you, can you guys hear me?
Oh, we just heard that, yeah.
Okay, well, um, thank you all for getting back to me with regards to serving on a a leadership, leadership position for 2021. After hearing back from everybody, the, if it's all the same with everyone, it seems like the officers for 2021 are going to be the same officers that were during the year 2020, being Rachel as our secretary, Melanie as our treasurer, Amanda as our vice president, and nobody wanted to take over the president role, so if you will have me yet again for another year, then I'll position, this will be my last year, I'll be on the board, so, um, but if somebody has changed their mind and they'd like to serve as president, now's the time to make mention of that. And I didn't think anybody would, so, um, so that's our, and that slate of candidates will be put forward to the board in the December meeting for approval, if my memory serves me correct. Is that right, Joe? That's what we do that?
That's right.
Somebody stop me if, if, if I'm like really breaking up and you're making no sense. Because I will stop talking in a heartbeat. Okay? But under trustee recruitment, we do have one person, Joe, correct, that we are going to put the name forward this evening?
That is correct. We thought we might have two, we thought we might have two, we only have one. The other person is, is not going to
You want to tell us about it?
Well, Christine Carpenter had expressed, had expressed interest in
Joe, because
Yeah.
Obviously, I can't.
Okay, so Christine Carpenter had previously expressed interest in rejoining the board, but just in the past couple of weeks, she has had to take on some additional work responsibilities, and so is not going to be rejoining the board. She will, however, if, as long as it's okay with, with everybody on the board, will continue to serve on our long-range planning community as she has done before, and will help out with the sustainability committee as well. But the person who we do have an application from is Shannon Dorr. Shannon moved to the village about five years ago from Hawaii, which was a great idea. She has a young family, she has, oh, Dan's left. She has a young family, she is very civic-minded, she most recently, during the early stages of the coronavirus, she was well-known about the village for making masks, sewing masks, and leaving them outside her home for anybody to take who needed one. She is a science educator, she was also involved in this most recent census as an enumerator going door to door and helping out with the census count. Does anybody else know, does, does anybody else know Shannon?
I know Shannon through some other stuff. Yes.
Good.
Joe, can you spell, shout her, can you make that?
It's Shannon Dorr, D-O-E-R-R.
You, D-U, D-U.
That's right, it's Dorr, D-U-E-R-R, Dorr. I think she would make a phenomenal addition to the board. Does anybody else want to speak on, on her, her nomination?
I, I, Joe, I think you're right, I think she'd be very great. She has a lot of ideas, and she's always thinking outside the box, and like you're saying, very community-minded, very civic-minded, I think she'd be a great addition.
I agree, and she, she's had past experience, she, she did have a position where she was a, an employee, but worked closely with the land conservation board, I believe, so she's, she did indicate that she was familiar with, with board meetings and with a working board, she's familiar with working with a working board.
Great. So would anybody like to move that Shannon Dorr be, be appointed to the board, beginning in January 2021?
I move.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining?
I, can you spell, can you spell? I got kicked off for a little bit.
It's Shannon, it's Shannon with three N's, S-H-A-N-N-O-N.
Okay.
Dorr, D-U-E-R-R.
Okay, alright, thank you. I'd like to introduce her with the correct spelling, thanks.
Yep, her application is in the board packet.
Oh, I guess, I should have realized that, yep, yep.
That's, that's okay. Alright. Amanda?
Alright, so it looks like the next thing online was new business. I don't know if there what was under new business?
There's nothing, unless anybody has anything to, to add to the agenda, which at the outset, nobody did.
Okay, then it is that we need a motion to move to executive session to discuss salaries for library director and bookkeeper.
Well, right, okay, so
See, it's kind of hard to do.
Yeah, so without Dan, this is going to be a little bit difficult, because I, I have to excuse myself.
Joe?
Oh, you're here, hey, hey, Dan.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a suggestion that we not go to executive session right now. And maybe we could, I could send out an email to folks to see when we might be able to do this in the next week or so, and we can do this through, I mean, I've got Zoom through where I work, I could set up that, because I'm having a whole lot of problems this evening, and I don't know why, and there are some things that we do need to talk about. So if people are okay with that, I could just get a sense in terms of when people might be able to get together for that. Unless you want to move forward, I just may not be able to be a part of the discussion at all, because I don't, I don't know what's happening with my connection, it's, I've never had problems like this in the past, so I don't know what's going on.
Well, it, it sounds good now, it sounds good now, I, I don't know if from a, from an open meetings perspective, it does have to be, even an executive session does have to be announced in, you know, in public, and
Okay, alright, well then
I'm gonna, I'm gonna
I will, I just, I just, I won't be able to see anybody, and, and this is, this is the best I can do right now, so I don't mind running the executive session if we want to do it this way. I just want to make sure that people are all comfortable about it, doing it this way, and if anybody has any discomfort with regards to doing it this way, I mean, Joe, what are you going to do? You're just going to stop recording and then just leave the room, is that the idea?
I'm going to stop recording, I am going to leave the meeting, I think I can leave the meeting without ending the meeting. I think I can do that as the organizer, although I'm, I've never, I've never tried to jump off a, a train.
I'm not so sure you're going to be able to do that, actually.
So the other option that, 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 that we could, that, that we could do if we don't, is that I can simply mute my computer and leave the room, leave this room, I won't be recording. I will turn off the recording, I'll turn off my volume, leave the room. The thing that I would ask is that somebody text me when, when we need to start recording again. And I will re-enter and, and, and begin recording again.
Oh, so you're going to, oh, we're going to, oh, so we're going to come back, oh, because we have to adjourn the meeting, don't we?
Yeah, we got to adjourn the meeting, that's got to be
Right, 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 okay. So does somebody have the capability to text Joe when this is executive session is over with?
Yes, I can.
I can text him.
Okay, cool.
If you don't have my phone number already, it's, everybody ought to just have my, my cell phone number, it's 518-429-8354. Alright.
Okay, so Joe, if you don't, probably don't try getting out of the, maybe just do the latter of what you said. Shoot the computer, you know, but go, go, go get something to eat or whatever, and we'll text you when we're done.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm not going to get something to eat, but I'm going to do a different, I'm, I'm going to stop the recording, turn down the volume, and leave the room, okay?
Alright, excellent, thank you, Joe.
Okay, no problem.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're going.
Okay, I got a motion to adjourn our November meeting.
Why don't I keep it going? I motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Somebody seconded.
Katie did.
Thank you, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, our November meeting has been adjourned, thank you guys for putting up with my technological glitches at this end, and we'll figure this all out.
Thank you for your leadership, Dan.
Thank you, everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
Joe, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Yeah.